Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everyone's peace remain standing, we have to ask Reverend George Benson, please come give us a prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. Realize you've been good to us and we've been to ourselves. Father, we ask that you touch our leaders in this Inxter community as we share love with one another. Teach us how to respect and love one another as we move forward in this city. Father, help us make this a city of love as we continue to work together in love, unity, harmony, and peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank God.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight and we do have a quorum.
Alright, um, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We need to add anything? Take anything off? What you want to add? Oh, okay.
A raise.
Are you on raise? Yeah, we put that on item Z.
How about item never?
Alright, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
You're properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Before we start with the presentations tonight, I want to give you a little update on the trash situation. I've been dying to do this. The good news is, our new cans will start to be delivered next week. Alright, so we'll get trash cans and recycle cans. Uh, it'll take them a few weeks to roll it out, so if y'all don't get them on Monday, don't call DPS. Uh, but they will be starting to be delivered next week. Until then-
Tell them you got your eye on it.
If you want to call Jerome, you can call him at DPS.
Call him anyway.
Um, also until then, you can, you can continue to use the brown cans until we get our new cans. We're hoping to use new cans because they just look better, they're newer. Uh, but if you need to use the brown cans in addition to the new cans, you can do that for the time being. We're looking at possibly trying to do something else, but we're not sure yet with the brown cans. Because it's just a, it's a bad look. Those of you who have it on the curb, upside down, take it back to your backyard inside of the house. No one's coming to pick up the brown cans at this point. So, you can continue to use them until we come up with something, some other solution. We're going to try to poll the community and see if there's some, if you want to get rid of them, we'll figure out a way to get rid of them. If you want to keep them, just to have a second can, you know, we can do that also. So, that's where we're at with this trash. Please tell your neighbors, let them know, because I've been riding around and everybody's still got them out in front of the house. It's been about two weeks now, you know, and they're not pretty cans anymore, they're old cans, so. Uh, but I'm excited about the new cans and I hope the trash volume should go down because now we have a recycling bin. So you're not throwing away water bottles, things that we can recycle, cardboard, you're going to put those in a recycle bin. So the amount of trash you have should go down. Okay, we have any elected officials in here? Nah, everybody took the night off? Our first presentation, we're going to have, it's going to be for the former mayor, William Bill Daniels. It's going to be a proclamation given to his family by myself, his daughter. Okay, come on up. Will you read it?
The proclamation reads, proclamation honoring William Bill Daniels. Whereas it is my duty to announce officially the death of the honorable William Bill Daniels. He was the mayor of Inxter from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-three. Whereas Mr. Daniels received his bachelor's, bachelor's degree from Tuskegee Institute of Alabama and had studies at the graduate level at Wayne State University. Whereas he taught for thirty-three years at Inxter High School as an industrial arts instructor. He was chairman of the Industrial Education Department and director of Project Score, a job skills program. And whereas, Mr. Daniels served in the public service in the city of Inxter as city councilman, mayor pro tem, and mayor. And whereas, Mr. Daniels served as past president of Inxter Federation of Teachers and past president of the Inxter Rotary Club. William Bill Daniels demonstrated in countless ways his dedication to others and the welfare of others and earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and ages. And now therefore let it be known that the mayor and council of the city of Inxter do hereby on behalf of the residents of the city of Inxter express our deepest sympathy, acknowledgement, and appreciation for the life of the honorable William Bill Daniels.
This is a proclamation to his daughter and they're having the memorial service this Saturday, right?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, um, at the Wayne Rec Center, Hype Center, what time?
Ten AM.
Ten AM. Uh, but you know, we have to honestly honor him because his service to the city. I mean, he held a lot of different positions, he served for a long time. He might be the second longest serving mayor. And I think, uh, Mayor Hampton was sixteen years, right? Um, so we just wanted to make sure we honored him and his contribution to our city. Thank you very much. Okay, the next presentation, redevelopment ready community presentation by Brett Handland. The shades. We high-tech up ahead, boy. What is she doing? He was asleep?
Alright, good evening mayor, council. Uh, my name is Brett Handland, Redevelopment Ready Communities Planner with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. Uh, tonight I have about a fifteen-minute presentation. Uh, it's going to provide some background on the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Uh, I'm then going to briefly go over the findings of an evaluation we performed on your development related practices. And then from there, I'm going to outline some next steps that you can take to align your practices with those of the RRC best practices. Um, and if you do achieve that, you'll be certified as a redevelopment ready community. Uh, so first I want to sort of provide you with some context. Uh, the RRC is part of the Community Development Division of the MEDC. Uh, the other two primary divisions, uh, Business Development, which is your, what a lot of people think of when you mention economic developments, your business attraction, um, retention, expansion. And then we have Marketing Promotions, uh, which a lot of people are familiar with the Peer Michigan Campaign. And we are, the RRC is in Community Development. And so we differ from Business Development because we focus on creating vibrant places and developing, uh, communities that have, um, high quality of life. Because we know it's those communities that are able to retain and attract talent, uh, as well as businesses. So, to do this, we offer communities technical assistance. So, this takes many forms, uh, for instance, the evaluation, the report that I wrote for you guys is an example of that. Uh, we identify ways that you can improve your plans, streamline your processes, update your policies so that they're exactly how you want them and that you're in the best possible position to succeed. Um, and so the RRC really tries to empower communities to shape, uh, proactively shape their future. A future that's, uh, built on a solid planning, zoning, and economic development foundation. So, this is what we call the Business Talent Place Connection. So if you take a look at the light blue, you'll see Business Needs Talent. Uh, if you go clockwise, Talent Wants Place, Place Needs Business. So this goes back to my point about, um, traditionally, economic development has been all about the business attraction and then the jobs will gravitate to the new business. Uh, but that's, it's a little too simplistic, especially in this day and age where people nowadays more so than ever are really choosing where they want to live first for a high quality of life that's going to meet their lifestyle. And it's really important to sort of, uh, retain and attract talent. So that's sort of where we fit in, is we want to create the vibrant places that where people want to be and then, uh, understanding that the businesses will follow. So we have, the RRC has eight guiding principles. Uh, I'm going to hit on a few of them. It's a self-help program, so we're not going to be able to complete the tasks for you, but we do have a range of resources that we can provide you, uh, to help you be successful. Um, I've been working with Adriana, she's aware of a lot of them and I'm going to hit on some as I go through the presentation here. Uh, we're big on predictability and transparency because we know investors, developers, even applicants in this community are much more likely to go and invest and go through the development review process when they know they're going to receive a high level of customer service, they're going to have timely decisions made, and they're going to have the zoning code administered consistently. And so we're really big on you guys being deliberate with how you, with how you, uh, zone here in Inxter. Uh, we're also big on partnerships because communities who are able to engage all your partners, uh, local and regional, early in the process and develop plans, um, they're much more, they're going to be better plans and they're going to be much more likely to be implemented, uh, when that time comes. I know in a lot of cases I'm preaching to the choir because you guys do a very good job of your stakeholder engagement. Uh, right now, the RRC program's working with over two hundred and thirty communities all across the state of Michigan of all different sizes. Um, we've had twenty-four communities, uh, bring themselves into full alignment with the best practices and, and, um, yeah, get awarded a certification as a redevelopment ready community. So this slide is really, it's a very cumbersome process, as you can see. This really kind of outlines my job more than it does, um, outline anything for you guys. What, all you need to know is that you're now right here, um, here tonight to present the baseline report. From here, we'll ask that you pass a resolution of your intent to continue participation. If I don't scare you off and you want to keep, uh, progressing, then that's, I'll work with Adriana and we can, and she'll draft a resolution or however you guys do it. Um, and we'll, we'll look for that. Uh, so, I'm going to get into all the, the different best practices. They're really organized into these six categories. Um, number one deals with your long-range planning. Um, you guys do a good job with that, your master plan, uh, downtown plan, DDA plan, and capital improvements plan. Number two, your zoning regulations. Number three, the development review process. We want to make sure that you guys have thought it through and want to remove any unnecessary obstacles and streamline it as best you can. Uh, recruitment and education, that takes a look at professional training and ongoing education for staff as well as officials appointed and elected. Our, our sites, um, we want you to, to take a good hard look at, at your sites in Inxter. Identify three of them, um, and create a vision for what you want to see it, um, be in the future. And sort of, that's a lot of times half the battle of a developer looking to, to invest in a community is site selection. So having that, having everybody on the same page, uh, with what you want to see there, um, is really what we're trying to get at with that one. And number six, community prosperity is, is really a two-parter. It's, um, developing an economic development strategy, which you guys already have met, which I'll show you in a bit. Next slide, and then, uh, marketing, a marketing plan. So you see each of these numbers matches up with, for instance, the one, oops. The one, and then you'll see two is all the zoning stuff, three, development review process. So, Inxter's already completed forty-one percent, um, and is in the process of completing the remaining fifty-nine percent. And this is, it's rare to not have any red, which is basically something that you haven't worked on at all. Uh, I think I've seen it one other time. Bitten to comsey. Uh, so it's, it's something, it's basically a testament to competent, effective staff and you guys should be commended, the support they receive from city council and planning commission. It's, it's really very impressive to see this, and so I was, I was excited to come here tonight. Uh, when I hit on some things that are going well, uh, the zoning code, it's very good. Um, there are a ton of provisions that all encourage, uh, walkability and pedestrian friendliness. Um, create a welcoming, inviting atmosphere for, for people who want to walk. The architectural standards are great, um, it's, they're very good. They, they ensure compatibility, so they want to make sure the building is compatible with the one next door architecturally. Um, but then also, uh, they, they break up facade lines and stagger them so that it creates aesthetic appeal through variety. Uh, you permit outdoor dining, which is great. That adds a lot of life to a downtown area and requiring street trees is good for any number of reasons. But again, with the walkability, um, stormwater, it's all, it's very good for that reason. Uh, the engaged citizenry, uh, this is, it's fantastic. The, the reinvent Inxter Strategic Plan, I, I really can't say enough good things about it. It, it, it helped you guys basically crush this criteria. You did very well, um, with the stakeholder identification, the focus groups, the design charade, uh, the education piece of it, the goal setting. You use your social media very effectively and your website, so that goes into, that's things that we look for, for citizen engagement. And so, you guys really have a lot of good things going on in regard to that. Um, and then economic development, um, the reinvent Inxter Strategic Plan, it's, it's really more than an economic development strategy, but it's, it's exactly what we're looking for in regard to diversifying the tax base and prioritizing goals and then also having the long-term goals on top of that action plan. So, yeah, well done in that regard. Couple of things that I highlighted in the report that you could improve upon. Uh, approving mixed-use buildings as a permitted use by right. It seems, it's consistent with the vision in the master plan, uh, that supports downtown housing. It would streamline the site plan review process as it would remove a step for people who are looking to develop housing on the second floor of a, a non-residential first floor downtown. Um, and it really would, uh, as I mentioned, complement the zoning code's other non-motorized transportation provisions. And this one is sort of, it's a very minor one. It's really, the recommendation is to establish a feedback mechanism to gather input on the site plan review process. And this will just enable you to learn from the people, the applicants who go through the process and, uh, continually improve that, uh, to better it, to improve it. Uh, moving forward, as I mentioned, we'll ask that you adopt a, a second resolution. I realize you've already done one, uh, to participate in the program. Uh, and then you'll complete the missing RRC criteria at your own pace based on capacity. Um, I'll be checking in with your staff at least, um, every three months just to see if there's any other way I can help or resources I can provide, um, and see, yeah, how you guys are doing. And then upon completion, uh, all, uh, you'll be certified as a redevelopment ready community. Uh, so now I want to talk about the value in your participation in the program. Uh, I like to start out by pointing out, uh, the, the value in having an objective third party, uh, review your documents and sort of create a, it's almost a work plan of everything that you could do. I've, I've recommended timelines, but that's all up to you. Um, but there's some value there. There's a lot of resources that Adriana is, is aware of. We have the RRC online library of resources available to engaged and, and certified communities. Uh, in three months from tonight, you guys will be eligible for RRC technical assistance. We need to think of a better name for that. It's tech, technical assistance grant funding, which is one-to-one matching grant dollars up to twenty thousand for any project that'll get you closer to certification. So anything that's not green, um, will match you fifty percent up to forty thousand. From there, um, if you, if you keep progressing and you become certified, there's a new level of incentives. And those are, they're changing over time, but right now we're offering pre-development service dollars, um, for publicly owned sites. And so if you have any publicly owned sites, it's something to keep in mind. And we actually, we just sort of, we're, we're really emphasizing getting shovels in the ground and turning over a lot of the properties that we've been marketing. And so we've created a redevelopment services team, which is three full-time employees working, um, to network with developers and market the sites. And, uh, yeah, get some excitement going around here. So, a good place to sort of, uh, get an overview of the resources is the myplace.org website. You can learn more about the RRC program there. And that's my contact info. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have now, of course, but feel free to email me or give me a call if you have any questions. Um, and that concludes my presentation.
Good, thank you. Anybody have any questions in council? Kind of thorough. This is something we're working towards, hopefully get there sooner than later.
Yeah.
We'll be working hard at it.
Yeah, I'm excited to work with you guys. Thank you.
Us too, thank you. Okay, the next presentation we have, H&amp;H Metals sponsorship presentation, Chief William Riley.
Uh, what, what we're here today is for the presentation by H&amp;H. Uh, the H&amp;H Metals, uh, they have donated five, five thousand five hundred dollars for our scholarship program that, uh, paid for also more for the academy and whatnot. Uh, we reached out and, uh, hey, I can, hey, I reached out and asked and he said, hey, we're here to help.
Get some pictures.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you guys. Okay, our next presentation, it's going to be introduction of a new police officer, Officer Klink. Chief Riley, you going to do this one too?
Yeah.
Family's on the spot too.
Uh, we want to, want to present Officer Klink and his family, his, uh, new hire. Uh, just came on board about a week and, uh, he's already in training and, uh, will be a training officer.
Glad to have you here, can't wait to put you to work. Make sure you know all these folks before you leave here tonight. Shake, shake hands and kiss babies. You got anything?
Oh, no, no, congratulations, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Could you introduce his family?
This is, this is my daughter Riley. This is my mother Sharon.
Hi Sharon, nice to meet you.
Glad to have you. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at it? Anything we need to change?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Support.
You're properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Boards and commissions?
Mr. Chair, I want to reappoint, uh, Tony Bailey back to the beautification committee.
Can we just make this a lifetime appointment?
Well, it seems like it.
Alright, we already have our information, you guys ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, uh, you made a motion, we got a second?
Support.
Alright, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Any other nominations?
Haven't gotten the paperwork.
ZB A? ZB A, we have a couple spots open. ZB A? You guys, you guys want to get the email? Okay, well, it's definitely, they, they don't meet terribly often, so we're not under the gun, but let's come with some names next meeting maybe? And anybody who's interested in, in serving on the zoning board of appeals, just let somebody on council know. Uh, he raised his hand. Um, you know, we'd be happy to have you serve. Okay, any other nominations? Alright, we'll move on. We'll move on down to new business.
Consideration and approval for a street closure of Florence Street between Sylvia and Princess Streets, July twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, for a black party from eleven o'clock AM until ten o'clock PM for an old-school black party. With the rain date of August fourth, two thousand and eighteen, the applicant is Donna Lawrence.
Good move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
You're properly moved and supported twice, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval of authorizing administration to approve the contract with DVM Utilities, Inc. for thirty-inch access covers for Yale Street Sewer to correct storm and sewer overflow violations of the intersection of Yale and Meadowdale. Contract amount is three hundred and forty-nine thousand nine fifty, plus a contingency of fifty thousand for the total of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine fifty for construction costs. An additional thirty-six thousand five seventy will be used for inspection of the construction.
A move.
Support.
You're properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consider approval of an incentivized housing program to all eligible city employees. This employee-based program requires acquisition and full rehabilitation of offered tax-foreclosed property at offer price from Wayne County.
Support. I mean, so moved.
Support.
How many years, Connie?
I don't know how long it's going to take. So moved.
How many years do you want to do the program?
Five, for five years.
It's been properly moved and supported. Uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Lastly, um, item D is consideration and approval for the Commission on Aging to host their annual senior picnic on August third, two thousand and eighteen at Wheatley Park.
Good move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
You're properly moved and supported, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. State Representative Joel Jones, you have anything for us, man?
Evening mayor, council, administration, citizens, uh, for today. I'll say as always, happy Monday to everyone. Uh, we are twenty-two days from the election, so, uh, on actual election day, I'm not sure, uh, the information was shared already. But then, the Western Wayne NAACP is having a transportation, so pick up and drop off at the polls. Uh, the contact number for that would be three one three, five four four, zero six two zero. Once again, that number is three one three, five four four, zero six two zero. Once again, that number is three one three, five four four, zero six two zero. Also, on August se- second, uh, from five to seven PM over at Fellowship Chapel, we're having a citizen resource fair. So, just to be an opportunity to see what organizations are in the neighborhoods. Um, and then also, we're gonna have a couple clerks there, um, just to let citizens know about, uh, election days that's coming up and, and a few other programs just in the community.
What time is that?
From five to seven PM, August sec- second. And I believe the address to Fellowship Chapel is twenty-seven, five hundred Marquette Street in Garden City. That's, that's all for me though, any questions?
Anybody have any questions, State Rep?
I got you.
All right, thank you. Okay, public participation, Yvonne Moore. Don't rush, don't rush, we got plenty of time.
Representative Joel Jones. Mayor Nolan and, um, council members. Thank you for allowing me this time. What I wanted to say was, one, thank you to, uh, Mayor Pearl Tim for, uh, getting the grass cut for us at King Park, uh, for our softball game on Saturday, July fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Um, also, thank you for all of your staff that participated, thank you Mayor for coming out. It was a really a good turnout for not only housing participation, but also the Inkster members that participated. Also, thank you Park and Recs for, uh, participating, giving us the equipment. Um, we had a very good time. And all of you who didn't come, you really missed something very special. The kids, they came out, they really, um, had a time. Reverend Williams will tell you, he was right there. Also, our own executive director, Mr. Paul Boninger, he was also out on the field playing. And even though they cheated. And, and the best part of all was seeing Reverend Williams slide across that base. And falling. And my little guy hitting a home run.
It's the truth, it's the truth.
Falling, and you know, and my little guy had to run around him and tag home base though. But we still had a good time, it was a really good time to bring community relations together. Not only housing, but all of Inkster. Because it wasn't just housing playing, it was Inkster playing. It was also, um, still, our own, just all of us just playing. And we all need to do that all often. Not only, we all need to get together and come together and play together to show that we have community relations, to show that we can come together as a community. That's something that we should do. Old, young, middle-aged, it doesn't matter, we just all should come together and have fun. And that's what I wanted to say.
Lucy Byrd? Sharon? Is that a, is that another person or is that name a church?
Sharon Southern Adventist is a church. Uh, thank you Mayor and the council for giving me the opportunity to announce our Adventist Community Service Affair. And it's been sponsored by Beaumont. And, uh, we have a counseling service. We have a twenty-one, uh, table, um, fair. And it deals with, um, all the major organizations Wayne County is going to be attending. And, uh, we have a, we have a program that's also geared towards children. We have a six-table, uh, health fair that teaches, uh, children and families from head to toe, how to take care of their bodies, what food to eat so that they can be healthy. We have, uh, the, uh, Michigan Alzheimer's, um, uh, disease, uh, program coming from, uh, the University of Michigan. And there are few programs, uh, there are very few studies that, that, uh, we can participate in. So you can come and sign up for a study. We have the Neighborhood Legal, um, Service, uh, Michigan Elder Law. We have Oak Street, uh, Health, uh, that, um, deals with older people that meet their needs. We have the Senior Alliances, and we have, um, I don't have it listed here. We also have, uh, an expo coming from, um, the Attorney General's Office that's gonna teach kids about bullying. And we need to learn, our kids need to learn early how to communicate and how to deal with problems. And that will solve a lot of, uh, uh, children getting angry and killing people up. We just need to know how to communicate with each other. And we need to learn how to love each other and to treat each other with dignity and respect. And I'm asking, uh, the, uh, Inkster community to come out. It's free, it's sponsored by Beaumont, and we're not asking for anything. The only thing we asking for is the citizen in Inkster to participate. And I think that this program will be an intervention program to help people to, uh, solve their problems. It will provide a lot of information. And I really appreciate your time to allow me to, uh, announce my health program.
Date and time?
Uh, it's, um, August, it's Sunday, August the nineteenth, from twelve PM to six, uh, PM. And I deliberately put it that way, so if you gotta, if you go on to church, go to church. And then, and come and, um, come and visit our health fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
We get the locations?
Where's it at?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to give you all some information because I, can I pass out some information? Okay, it's going to be, uh, August the nineteenth, um, from twelve to, uh, six PM at the American International Academy, twenty-seven one hundred Avondale Street, Inkster, Michigan. And you know, um, there, um, this is one of the few schools that's, that's open in Inkster. And we need to know about these schools. So that instead of children being transported out of Inkster, we have schools that they can attend here in Inkster. But a lot of people are not even aware of it.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Bennett?
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, my name is Joan Bennett and I live on Penn Street. I've been in Inkster since.
You can, I might, Bennett, there you go.
I've been in Inkster since December of twenty sixteen. And March twenty eighteen, the house next door to me caught fire. Fireman came, woke my son and myself up, got us out, did a wonderful job, awesome. Um, I know it's a process to have houses torn down, and I, I can appreciate that. But the backyard, even before the fire, it was a jungle back there. Now, it's even worse. I work midn- uh, excuse me, afternoon, so when I get off at eleven o'clock, the only light is on my garage and on my house when you walk past. So I can't see anything over there. The trees, we get one good wind blow or storm, they're coming down. All I ask is that somebody come and cut those trees down, cut that grass. I don't want my son to come home and find me in the stairwell. I'm s- I'm sorry.
Do you, do you happen to know the address? I got your address, right next to you. We're gonna see it. Yeah, her address is, yeah, two six two two eight.
Thank you.
All right, we will, we will go and check it out tomorrow.
I am afraid every night when I come home that somebody is in there. I have a gun, but I don't wanna shoot nobody. But I will if I have to, you know, to defend me. But if somebody could just come and cut that grass, it, it'd help.
We'll do that.
It'd help. And if you look at that video, you will see it, it's, it's not pretty at all. I just, just want somebody to, I mean, I've called.
You did?
And, and. I've called and people have put me a hold, told me they'll call me back. And I know the city closes at four o'clock. I get off work and it's, I can't call anybody, they're in, everybody at home sleeping, you know, so. I just, just cut it down some so I'll feel a little bit safer. But I, like I said, I have a gun and I will shoot it at whoever's out there, but that's not what I wanna do. I just want the trees and the grass cut.
Okay.
I don't know that address, but it's right next door to me.
We'll be able to figure out, yeah, we have your address, so.
Thank you.
We'll go check it out tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
David Mosley?
Uh, good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
All right, uh, what I wanted to speak, uh, first of all, what I wanted to ask you was if I could just have a small trash can or something small enough that I can lift and put on the back of my truck so I can do some volunteer work around the area of Pine and, uh, Harrison, uh, where I live at. I sweep up and down that street already, but I have a, uh, a, a bucket, like a huge dustpan on a stick that I take out there and I sweep up and I just empty it into my own already overfilled trash can, as you know, we haven't been emptied. But, uh, as soon as I sweep it up, I'll come back out in the afternoon, a lot of that trash has returned because of the idiots that pass by there and see me cleaning, they choose to throw it right back out there. And that includes broken bottles. But anyhow, I decided to go ahead and get that can myself. But the next thing is, uh, the speeders. Nobody stops at the stop sign in Paris, at, uh, at Pine and Harrison, they just cruise right on past. I sit right in, uh, my nephew's yard and, uh, they, they don't even do a California stop where you slow down a little bit, they just zoom right on through it like the stop sign's not even there. And then you got the kids and the, uh, lazy unemployed younger adults that's riding on those motorcycles and little mini bikes still zooming through there too, not stopping. So, I was just wondering if, uh, maybe the police could set up over there somewhere and catch them and maybe impound some vehicles along the way and, you know, knock someone a riffraff off the streets because that's who's doing it. Nobody's stopping at those stop signs over there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, uh, have a good evening.
Okay, so you, you don't need a garbage can?
Uh, well, I like it. You know, if I, if I could have the small trash can, I, I would sweep up all the way up Pine, all the way from where I'm Harrison, all the way down to, uh, Inkster Road.
Bivens, you got a garbage can? I got a brown one. Whole bunch of them. No, I'm just joking, but that's, see, Mr. Bivens, chief, you got that address? Okay, okay.
Mayor? Um, I just spoke with Mr. Bivens about arranging a Pine Street cleanup. We were in your office, so I'd like to give this gentleman my card and he can contact me. Or maybe you can leave your, you all have his information and we can contact him when we get ready to do the Pine Street cleanup. You're right, it's.
First thing you see when you turn on Pine off Inkster.
Right, we're gonna do that and Lehigh behind that store. All right?
All right, thank you. Officer Leboz?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Got your pen because August is packed, we've got so much going on. Um, first off, I would like to, uh, continue to announce National Night Out. That is Tuesday, August seventh, from five to nine PM in the Inkster Police Department parking lot. We're gonna have live entertainment, karaoke, DJs, bounce houses, a video game truck, basketball courts, um, face painting, games, food and beverages, as well as we have so far, as of today, have thirty-six Inkster organizations onboard as vendors for the event. So, the flyer is over there. On the back is all our vendors. If you are an organization within the city that wants to be involved, reach out. Uh, my number is three one three, four hundred, five three eight seven. Or you can reach me on my email, A L E B as in boy O, at cityofinkster.com. We are offering you a free booth at this event. What National Night Out is just a community building event, come together as one, have a lot of fun, and that's about it. So please join us, August seventh, five to nine PM. Next up, Coffee with a Cup is going to be August fifteenth at Applewood Coney Island. That's two eight six four zero, Michigan Avenue at ten AM. Um, come out and join us, uh, we had a little bit low attendance at our last one, so I'm hoping we get some more people at the next morning coffee at Applewood Coney. That same day, however, uh, we are having the bake sale at the police department. Um, it's our quarterly bake sale, it's gonna start at ten AM until supplies run out. We will take orders, I'm telling you. People like to show up at one o'clock and think they're gonna get shortbread, it's not happening. It's not happening. So, please let me know if, and I can take your order. Uh, movie, movie night at the police department, we had our last one on Friday and it was so much fun, we had an amazing turnout. Mr. Jones, thank you for coming out with your family, it was very nice to see you there, helping us, support us. Um, we watched Moana and I wanna give a big shout out to One World Church, or One, I'm sorry, One Mission Church for, uh, running our concession stand, as well as F and R Automotive for funding our raffle. Um, our next movie night is August twenty-fourth, eight thirty PM. Uh, we took a vote at the last movie night and Ferdinand the Bull is what won. So, we'll be watching Ferdinand. Um, as usual, free popcorn, hot dogs, snow cones and refreshments, please join us. Two more. August eighteenth is gonna be our Piscapalooza, that's gonna be at the Rec Center. It is a community initiative that falls under the Uni and the Community Campaign with the Inkster Task Force. Uh, the police department is involved, um, because it's a lot of fun to do those types of things, come together. So, we're gonna have a back-to-school carnival with bounce houses, free food, fun for all ages, backpacks, live music, games and prizes. It's going to be the backpack event of the year, please join us. Um, and know that registration closes at two PM for the backpack, so get there prior to two PM. Last but not least, next Saturday is Public Safety Day, we're partnering with Project We Hope, Dream and Believe. We're going to have, the event is from ten to three, with vendors, kick, uh, vendors and entertainment, games, food. At one o'clock, we'll be playing a kickball game with the Inkster Police and Inkster Fire versus the youth. So come and watch me make a fool of myself. Thank you all.
We might beat a whole lot of people.
It might be worth coming out.
I'm sorry, the, uh, it's going to be at the, um, park at Middle Belt and Pine.
What day is the kickball?
Saturday, August fifteenth. I'm sorry, Saturday, August twenty-first, I'm sorry. Where did my phone go? I have it written down, hang on. It's the wrong tone. Pardon me. Saturday, July twenty-first, Saturday, July twenty-first at, um, Lamone Park, Middle Belt and Pine. At ten thirty, or it starts at ten o'clock till three, kickball game is at one o'clock.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Will Miller?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Administration and city family, uh, my name is Will Miller. I am happy to be the current president of the National Action Network for Western Wayne County District. We have an event coming up. Um, as you guys know, most everybody knows, the primary is coming around pretty soon for time for us to get ready to vote. Um, in this area, the primary is a remarkably important time for us to be voting. So, um, we want to give everybody another opportunity to meet up with the thirteenth congressional district candidate. That's the race that we've been looking the closest at. Um, so on, there's gonna be a conversation series, um, over at St. Clement's Episcopal Church over on the corner of Harrison and Pine, forty-three hundred. Um, this is the flyer. We're gonna be, dates the nineteenth, twenty-third, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. For the, um, nineteenth, we're gonna have Ian Conyers come out. Um, the twenty-third, it'll be Rashida Tlaib coming out. On the twenty-fifth, um, council, Detroit Council President Brenda Jones will be coming out. And on the twenty-sixth, state Senator Coleman Young will be coming up. Um, we will be offering refreshments for folks, I think I got like a sp- a spaghetti pan and, um, some pound cake and some, some other stuff that's gonna be for the first, man, it's gonna be, y'all gonna love it, I'm telling you. Me. It's, it's gonna work. But as I said, it's gonna be more, more relaxed, instead of it being a panel discussion, we're gonna talk to each individual candidate, give everybody an opportunity to try and get to know the individual candidates as people. Um, get a little bit more in-depth of what it is that they wanna do and who they are as people. Also, National Action Network has been working to put our newsletter back out. Um, the first issue came out, um, for the June-July period, um, articles written. Um, article's written, says, "Is Inxter Ready to Realize Its Potential?" And the other primary article on the paper is, "Who Can Fill the Shoes of the Dean in the Thirteenth Congressional District?" As I said, that's what we have been focusing on. Um, but other than that, I believe that is all I have for you fine folks this evening.
What time?
Oh, I apologize for that. Um, all of them are gonna be starting out at six P M. Um, five-thirty, we're gonna, I'm gonna lay the food out and we'll give everybody an opportunity to kinda mill around and, and meet and talk with each other prior to the event.
One more thing.
Absolutely.
Um, will the sessions be taped for those people who can't attend?
That's a good question. Yes.
Okay. I think it's very important that we get out and vote this, this election, so.
We agree. We're also gonna be streaming it live, we're gonna be trying to do it on both Twitter and, and YouTube and probably Facebook.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the only copy of the information?
There are several over there on that table currently. That's a good questions. Y'all have a good night.
Alright, thank you. Reverend George Williams.
He got a fan.
He's still sore from the letter.
Watch your mouth, watch your mouth. Did what I had to do. When she got up there and talked to you, she didn't tell you who the winning pitcher was. Amen. Listen, but I wanted to address everyone and basically, the reason why I'm coming here, I know a lot of you sitting here, are warriors. Okay? And one of the things that I notice about the warriors of Inxter, we, we can all come together when it's time to come together for historical purposes. Okay? And I'm, I'm coming before you in the public, 'cause I know this is being recorded to the people of this community, that we need to come together, okay? And we, we got history here, okay? Jewel Jones was one of the youngest state rats in the United States, was elected right here in Inxter. And if we sit on our dead behinds and let that go to waste, I tell you, we some terrible people. You know, we need, we need to get out here, we need to knock on your doors, we need, we need to let that mayor and garden city know that he just can't come here and take, just take the position because he thinks he who he is. Okay? I think we need, we need to come together and rally. I'm ready and I hope a lot of you are ready to join us and let's get him elected, okay? Somebody gonna win the, the thirteenth district congressional, they going around everywhere, they, that's the big fight they got going on. And God knows, I bless the one who gets there, okay? But I'm thinking about what we have here in Inxter, okay? Stand up Jewel Jones. Nothing left than ninety-five percent. Everybody get their, get, get the T-shirt, ninety-five percent of this city. Because had, had this city went out and voted like they voted for Obama, do you know that Snyder never would've been the governor of the United, of, of the state of Michigan? All we had to do was go vote. He didn't win about as much. And we won at the end, up at the, at, at the end, so. So let's come together in this city. I, you know, I, I've been praying and hope many times that we can come together and we put all that, well, I ain't gonna say it, Mayor. Behind us, you know, because we gotta learn that here, that quit, quit making everything personal. Because ain't none of us here got nothing, only, there's only one rich person in this whole room. You know, that ain't nobody else got no money? I'm not gonna tell you because y'all gonna wanna kidnap him, so I ain't gonna tell you. God bless you, Mr. Mayor, I hope they can join us. No, 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 I didn't. He's a rookie on the block. But if y'all really wanna, y'all really wanna know who that rich person is, I'll tell you. I ain't gonna tell you now, though. I hope y'all join me out here for this campaign. I know I'm up there in age, but yet and still, I can still knock on some doors and tell people that Jewel Jones is the person to put back in there, but we can all celebrate because we need to keep our history going. And God knows, we got some history in here, we had the oldest lady in the world. And that, that was a compliment. You see what I'm saying? We got, we got, we got our young mayor now, full-time mayor, give him a hand. Full-time mayor. I can name you a whole line of people across here would say, "Oh, man, Inxter never have a full-time mayor." Inxter would never get a full-time mayor. Okay, and some of them still think that today. But yet and still, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. Okay? Not only that, we got a full-time mayor, we got a cheaper. Younger, okay. Okay, uh, everybody know the, uh, the new, uh, Holland Director, stand up there, Paul. New Holland Director. Since y'all, since y'all introducing everybody, I, I wanna introduce the new Holland Director. That's what them play haters do, Mayor. That's what them play haters do. We ain't gonna talk about.
You gonna talk about this one?
Oh, man, that's messed up. Councilman Steve Chisholm.
Can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
I do wanna tell people to vote.
Um, I just would like to tell all the residents, um, who are interested in absentee voting to please contact the city clerk's office. You know, voting, um, absentee is one of the easiest things you can do. You fill out your application, you get your ballot, we mail it to you. It's, it's, it's extremely simple. So I would like to encourage everyone, um, to vote, but I would also like to encourage you to vote absentee as well. So if you need, um, assistance with that, please contact the clerk's office, three-one-three-five-six-three-nine-seven-seven-zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm.
Uh, no comment.
Councilman Chisholm.
Farewell, everyone.
Councilwoman Howard.
No comments.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
No comments tonight.
Councilman O.
Yes, sir, I have a comment. It is some of the things that were said here tonight. That's basically building with what the gentleman said about coming together to clean up the city. I think that's very important. You ride through the community, different areas and so forth, you'll see trash everywhere, vacant houses, people throwing stuff around, so forth and so on. I do it and I do it on a regular basis, 'cause I'm looking at what's happening within the community. But it's our community to, to, together. And I think that if we all come together and clean up in the area where we are, city would be even a better city than what it is now. And I'd just like to say, let's come together to the citizens of the city of Inxter and clean up our city and make it much better than what it is now. That's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Whitley.
Um, one of the residents had to leave and they asked me to make this announcement for them. The, uh, it's a Need to Feed program, the New Step, uh, organization. This coming Friday, from eleven to one P M., is having a food drive for anyone who wants to come. It's going to be held at New Birth Baptist Church, two-seven-six-eight Avondale. Uh, this coming Friday, don't have the date, but y'all.
Twenty.
Uh, from ele- huh?
Twentieth.
The twentieth, okay, from eleven to one P, eleven A M. to one P M., a Need to Feed program through New Step. And also, I would just like to say, in reference to, um, Representative Jones, the one thing that you do have with him is access, is something you won't have with other people. Will be able to access. I have never called him and it's not just because he loves me and he not respond, okay? So that's what you get with this, you have somebody in there working for you.
Mayor Proto.
Yes, thank you. Um, I've been getting a number of calls from landlords and citizens alike about their water bills. Um, and through the administration, uh, one time we had a policy where we're shutting off water at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. What's happening is we have a lot of landlords who, uh, have tenants who, uh, rent up the water bill to like a thousand or more and then they leave. And so then, then, then we, we put it on the landlord's taxes, which is, which is unfair. So I'll, if I need to make a motion, I'll make a motion, but we need to go back to shutting water off at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's not fair to those landlords to, to pay that kind of money. And even the citizen, you know, um, you know, the city at one time where we went under consent agreement, one of our highest debts was water. Because people wasn't paying their water bills. So we didn't wanna have a, go back in time and go through that all, all over again. So we need to start shutting off the water.
What is the shut-off limit now?
Well, we don't use a, a hard, uh, dollar limit. It's purely based off of, um, the time, how far past due a, a bill is. Um, but in all honesty, the, the biggest challenge is just processing the, um, number of turnoffs. We probably have more turnoffs than we're able to process. Uh, just based on the, um, resources that we have within the, uh, Department of Public Service.
So it's kind of a backlog in, in shutting the water off, so they can run that bill up. If you just wanna turn the water and run it twenty-four hours a day, you know, it's.
But when, when you're getting people having two and three thousand dollar water bills, that's a huge backlog.
Oh, I know.
You know, and it shouldn't ever get that way. It shouldn't, I just, in my opinion, it just shouldn't get that way. Um, next thing is, um, I need to know, has the tree trimming company started doing the tree trimming yet? I see Jerome shaking his head over there.
No, no, sir.
And can you, when are you gonna get to it?
That contract's going out for bid, sir.
Um, so will we get the trees trimmed this year or next year?
That's my plan, sir, but it's going out for bid.
The plan for this year or next year?
This year.
This year. Um, who's I'm asking that question, 'cause there's some, on my street, there's a, a tree on, on city side of, uh, the curb. Tree is literally grow over to the other side of the street and it's like every other week, there's branches falling into the middle of the street. So trees need to be trimmed. So that's what I need to know. That's all I have.
That's it?
Sorry about that. Um, in regards to what Tim said about the landlord, um, and the water bills being too high, the landlord should be getting a bill. Because the bill belongs to the house and if the landlord owns the house, that's actually his responsibility. And we went through this years ago when we were two, it's been a while. But the landlord is, whoever owns the house is responsible for the water bill. No matter whoever lives in there, who has to pay. So therefore, the landlord should be getting a printout of the bill as well as a tenant, if that's how they hook it up. But he should always know what's going on with his property because it can ultimately leave him losing his property, him or she, if she does not pay the water bill. So I think we need to stress that as well too, Tim.
Oh, well, the landlords I talked to, they are getting a, a copy of the bill. There's some other things going on.
Oh, okay.
Alright, since, uh, this is last meeting for July, so on your way out tonight, I want you all to take a good look at Reverend Williams' truck. He has the most innovative Jewel Jones sign you will ever see in your life. He spent a lot of time creating that thing to put that sign on the roof of his truck. It is incredible, so make sure you take a look at it. We got a lot of ingenious people in the city of Inxter. And we'll see y'all next month.
One more thing, I'd like to thank the, uh, Inxter Summer Fest Committee for a wonderful festival that they gave.
Oh, yeah, yeah, one more thing. Everybody, our new interim Parks and Rec Director, William Moore, stand up. Wave your hands. He's proud of the Parks and Rec, call him. Alright, we'll see you next month.
Most of you are German, support.
I'm removed, supported, uh, discussion, all those who ever say aye.
Aye.